Thank you for joining us on your school channel, Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the October 22 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Boards of Education Meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair. I appreciate your attendance and I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational quote for tonight is from Ralph Waldo Emerson. The purpose of our life is not to be happy, it is to be useful, to be honorable, to be compassionate, to have it make some difference that you have lived and lived well. We will now have a moment of silence in memory of a Career Center teacher that passed away recently.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next order of business is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to include the Board Spotlight video under special recognitions?
Move to approve.
So I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Thank you. We have amended the agenda. Next, let us enjoy and welcome the Band Jamboree Brass Ensemble.
This evening's brass ensemble represents the 12 marching bands of WSFCS that performed last week at our Marching Band Jamboree and they are joined tonight by, I'm sure, some of their parents but also some of their teachers. Tonight, they will perform the Star Spangled Banner arranged by former West Forsyth High School Band Director, Mr. William Bill Tony, who passed away earlier this year. The National Anthem will be conducted by Walker Town High School Band Director, Mr. Quincy Lundie, who is a former student of Mr. Tony. At this time, please rise for the playing of our National Anthem.
Next, Amanda Lamert, our Chief Communications Officer, will recognize our Watauga and Buncombe County Support Volunteers.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Kaplan and Board Members. I am proud to be here tonight to thank our staff and our community for their support for our western North Carolina neighbors. In the days after Hurricane Helene, Superintendent McManus reached out to her counterparts in western North Carolina to hear how they were faring. Needless to say, the scale of devastation was unimaginable. On a Sunday night, she got out her phone and text messaged the staff with a question, "What can we do to ease this burden?" And the answer came within a few hours. Let's send staff and supplies. By Monday afternoon, the communications team had created a water-for-Watauga promotional campaign asking our community to donate cases of water. The operations team pulled together heavy equipment and then recruited volunteers who were willing to deploy to schools in western North Carolina and even camp out overnight if necessary in order to help them clear the way back to campuses. That team, Thad Carter, Dwayne Cook, Jack Keiger, and Trevor Manring left for western North Carolina first thing Tuesday morning when it was still dark. Beginning that day at 7:00 a.m., dozens of staff members showed up at the central office parking lot to manage a massive water collection drive. This all-day effort was led by our operations and our security team, which includes Jonathan Wilson, Chad Williams, Brent Cook, Deshaun Love, and Vincent Harris. The community response was overwhelming. Businesses, church groups, families, community organizations like the Forsyth Community Association of Educators. School staff came with cars just absolutely filled to the roof with water. Some people even brought entire pallets. A couple that did not want to be recognized drove all the way from Raleigh to bring us a full cartload of it. Local businesses like Hodges Roofing, Food Lion on North Point, Guardian Fueling Technologies, Lowe's Home Improvement, and HGR also sent large donations. We wanted to fill two buses to send them to Watauga County. We did that in 90 minutes. By noon, we had filled another bus and a box truck and we started to panic a little bit. What were we going to do with all this water? And that is when a really awesome local business, Big Will's Truck Shop stepped up and sent us an 18-wheeler to fill. And that still was not enough space to fill the generosity of this community. We actually filled a whole other half of the 18-wheeler after that. The next day, our operations team, Tim Reich, Matt Oakley, Tony Hutchins, Kathleen Pearl Kate, Lonnie Barber, Jasmine Morrison, Sloan Pig, Howard Michael Kates, and the folks at Big Will's all caravans out to western North Carolina that day and we actually took water to Watauga and Ash Counties. We had so much to give. So on behalf of the superintendent, I'd like to thank these individuals and organizations that we mentioned here tonight as well for leading this effort with empathy and compassion. And also to the hundreds of donors across, not just in Winston-Salem, not just Forsyth County, but in this region that turned up to donate. And the dozens of volunteers, both from the staff and from the community who turned up to haul cases of water, it really showed us that this community really has a huge heart. So I'd just love to bring forward these campaign leaders that I mentioned here today to be formally recognized.
That policy is a no-phone zone for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools students during the school day. So Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Cable 2 caught up with some of the students and parents to get their reaction to how it's working. Let's take a look at the Board Spotlight video.
There are some students who actually really do well at school, but with cellphones as a distraction, especially since we are teenagers, it definitely keeps us from being productive. I see a lot of my friends, a lot of students being more active in their classes, actually paying attention, and I think this is really a way to motivate them to do well in their classes. There is a deeper learning in the classroom because some people also use phones to access the internet and AI and this way they're forced to really use their mind to think and this is how they really progress as learners.
I love the cellphone policy. That was something that me and my husband implemented in our son's phone where it really didn't work during the day, but it could still be distracting because everyone else's phone was going off or they were looking at other things. And so now that it is across the board, you can't pull it out. Yeah, I think it's great.
We're more focused on our classes, our grades, the test scores is going up, classwork is getting turned in on time. So I feel like the cellphone policy is going very well.
The first week, it was like sort of a growing thing because you're used to having your phone all the time and stuff like that, but then you hit with this new policy, like no phone, no phones. Some people felt like it was too strict or nothing, but I kind of saw it would open mine. I'm just like, okay, this is a good thing. You're focused more. Your phone is a little distraction and not even having it on the desk to even distract you. Even if you had it on the desk, it would distract you a little bit, but now that it's in the pocket, boy, it's just better. It's way better.
My daughter is a pretty good rule follower, so once she's told what the rule is, she'll follow it. She hasn't noticed it being a big situation or issue amongst her friends. They're asked to put it away, they put it away. It's not really an issue that she has seen that's caused a lot of back and forth with teachers or with her friends and she hasn't suggested that she minds it at all.
I do think that our behavior issues have gone down. I think that there are people who benefit from not having distraction and I think it brings better communication between students and teachers if you're not just talking through them, you're actually talking to them. I think it makes everybody really happy, like on both sides, mostly teachers because they don't have to deal with the phones, but I think that some students, even at Tabor, when they have, they're scared of not having their phone. I think some of them really enjoy it because they're not worried about someone says, "Talking about me on the phone." They're not worried about, "Oh, somebody's going to fight me." There's less rumor spread, so I think it's been great all the way around.
Thank you for that Board Spotlight video. That was great. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you all sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, respectful, and direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. Now, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personal information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard. There's a follow-up process to adopt your questions or concerns. You have up to three minutes to speak and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. Our first speaker tonight is Robert Jordan.
Board Members, thank you. I want to speak to the matter of prayer. I believe there's a God in heaven and that we can all have a personal relationship with Him through Jesus Christ. I further believe that we all live eternally. The grave is not the end, it's only the beginning. An eternal destiny awaits us all. God's Word teaches us these things. You, as a Board, have been elected to serve our children. Our founding fathers established this nation based upon Judeo-Christian values. They did not view the role of government as one of lordship over the people, but as one of servant to the people. In your case, you have been called to serve our children, to do those things that are in their best long-term interest. I would hope that this Board would be wise enough and godly enough to realize that you need God's wisdom as you make important decisions related to the education of our children. You can seek God's light or you can seek a path of darkness. You can pray for God's wisdom or decide that your wisdom is greater than God's wisdom. This is your decision, but know this, God will hold you accountable. In this life or the next, we will all be accountable for the decisions that we make. I would suggest that you would open your Board meetings with prayer, seeking God's wisdom as you seek to serve our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Spangler.
Good evening, School Board, Chair Kaplan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on prayer as well. My name is Reverend Laura Spangler and I speak in the name of Jesus Christ. I want to urge our School Board to say no to the request to end Christian prayer before your meetings. Our country was founded on the First Amendment rights of freedom of religion and freedom of speech. I urge you, please do not go along with an atheistic group that is against our Constitution. You have done well in the past to have prayer before your meetings. Jesus Christ is our Creator, our Lord, the only and lasting source of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, as we hear in our Constitution. We have an inalienable right to call upon Him to help our children and youth. Our public education system desperately needs Jesus and biblical teaching. The Declaration of Independence ends with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence. A time of silence only does not give clear acknowledgement of our need for God's providence. Our Constitution was written by our founding fathers and they chose to engage daily in prayer before their meetings. And they also worshiped every Sunday in their chambers as they wrote the Constitution. Our country's founding documents are God-inspired and based on biblical principles. Psalm 33:12 says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." And 1 Thessalonians 5:12 says, "Pray without ceasing." So I just want to remind you that our Forsyth County Commissioners fought all the way to the federal level to secure and keep this basic right to be able to pray in the name of Jesus, to pray, as you recall, at the beginning of their meetings. And I was often invited to come and pray in the name of Jesus before their meetings and it was such a blessing. So I just urge you, do not be afraid to continue the good practice of prayer. Our Constitution stands with you and God is listening. I encourage you, choose the only source of lasting life, liberty, and happiness.
Thank you. Michael Spangler.
Madam Chair, good evening. My name is Michael Spangler and I grew up here. I went to South Fork Elementary School, to Clemens Middle School, to West Forsyth High, and I'm very thankful for the education I received and how it has helped me serve the Lord in my adult life now. I'm here to address the problem of prayerlessness, which, as you've heard from others, is a great sin and indeed a shame upon our city and upon its schools. But the problem of prayerlessness points to a deeper problem that it's merely a symptom of, and that's the problem of godlessness. Because it is a mark of wicked men, of men who are without God and without hope in the world, that they would not even think to call upon the Lord in such a weighty matter as caring for our nation and our city's children. I saw this as a student in these schools. I was taught many things that frankly poisoned my mind. I was taught feminism. I was taught anti-white hatred. I was taught religious pluralism, which is a great insult to the one true triune God and the only mediator between God and men, Jesus Christ. And I was taught Darwinism, which is a form of atheism. We must repent of prayerlessness, but we cannot heal this wound slightly. We must repent of godlessness, which has for many years now suffused the curriculum of our school system. What would it mean to return to prayer to the true God while our schools are ignoring Him or insulting Him daily? What would it mean to pray in the name of the only Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the same One who will come in judgment and uncover soul-destroying errors taught daily in our classrooms and bring a just judgment for them? I urge you to repent. Repent of prayerlessness, but repent more deeply of godlessness. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Nikki Reed.
Christopher Lyne from Freedom from Religion said, "It is insensitive and intimidating to force nonreligious citizens to choose between making a public showing of their nonbelief by refusing to participate in prayer or else displace deference towards a religious sentiment in which they do not believe but the School Board members do." Why should anyone feel intimidated? The heads are all bowed and the eyes are all closed by the believers. We're not looking around. So if people are looking around, they're probably just like you, nonbelievers. So why would you feel uncomfortable? No one is asking people to stand up to pray or repeat after me-style prayer. That would be obvious and kind of uncomfortable. I would get that. But bowing the heads and silently praying is just one person complaining to an anti-God nonprofit, which in turn is threatening all of you. What a world we live in. Leadership bowing down to people being offended these days. Feelings are fleeting. Next week, that same person may feel a different way and wants you to change it back because you changing it to the moment of silence is now offending them. When does it stop? Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Seaver.
I come tonight as a parent, a grandparent, and a retired teacher from Iowa. I also remember that when 9/11 happened, I had students that were so fearful, that were so traumatized, and I was able to pray with them. I was able to comfort them. I was able to give them hope. I understood that because I was Christian. The oath thing, I looked it up, the oath, the Declaration of Independence. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with Creator, by our Creator." I don't care what you call them. Whatever your Creator is, that's who we give allegiance to. Nobody says you have to pray to Jesus Christ. Nobody says you have to pray to Allah. Nobody, just pray. Just pray. When you become citizen of this country, you go through all the learning that you have to do and it says at the end, "While they're taking their vow, their oath, this obligation freely, without any mental reservation of purpose of evasion, so help me God." Citizens of the country, we're born, most of us, some of us, we were given the luxury of being born here. So people that want to come here and want to be citizens, they give, "So help me God," whatever the God. Okay? We're not demanding certain things. We're just reminding people of certain things. When our presidents, our vice presidents, our senators, our representatives, and other federal employees take their oath, it is that "I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God." See what I'm getting at here? One thing kind of leads to the other. When we take an oath in this country, it's on God. It's not on what you think this day and what your mind's going to change to that day. None of that. What do I have, 40 seconds? And then, I looked up the Board of Education oath of office. Guess what that is? It says, "Do and execute all things belonging to the office of the Board of Education member so long as I shall continue in office, so help me God." That was your oath. Don't let one person or one group of people change your oath, change our oath as citizens for this country and for our God. Please, think this over. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Jackson.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I may be the
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I may be the oldest person in here. But I'm saying that because I like to do this with my little pals and let you know. All of my life, I was taught to obey the laws of the land, seek peace with people, and not change anything unless you've got permission from Mom and Dad. But we have a legacy here in this world, in this country, like we said earlier, someone said earlier, that people come in here repeating the words that we have just about thrown away. And what is we doing, what are we doing this for? Because it's a new trend or what? But let me say this. For those of us that struggle so hard to make a paycheck, what is on the dollar bill? On the coins. Everybody comes here, they don't want the other stuff because they might get the amount of money they want to get. They want the USA dollars. Why do we do that? We need to, we have a lot of housekeeping to do, to either change everything, start all over again, abide by the law of mankind in this country, and know that we are people of God. We did not make ourselves. And if you want to be here and be healthy and maybe grow as old as I am, follow the rules that we started once upon a time. God bless you.
Thank you. Ashley Wallace?
Good evening. I'm here to speak about removal of prayer from our school board meetings. In our pledge of allegiance that we just recited, we said, "One nation under God." Prayer is used in every religion, not just Christianity. The Supreme Court ruled in 2014 that opening a school board meeting with a prayer does not violate the Establishment Clause under the legislative prayer exemption. It is a First Amendment right to open the meeting with a prayer. No one is being forced to pray. You are free not to pray. Why are we taking away the rights of so many who benefit from prayer for someone who can just choose not to pray? Where is the freedom for religion? Thank you.
Allen Daniel?
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, members of the Board, Ms. McManus. I'm going to stray from the agenda tonight, not your agenda.
Okay. Just making clear.
Fooled you, didn't I? In the background information description for the calendar that's going to be debated tonight, it states, "Those results yielded 51% for Calendar A, 49% for Calendar B. When reviewing the details by stakeholders, parents, classified staff, and students favored Calendar A while teachers favored Calendar B. However, according to the bar chart in the presentation, 155 students prefer Calendar B, 146 students prefer Calendar A. So more teachers and students prefer Calendar B." Those are really the two most important groups among our stakeholders. Also, 1,190 teachers responded to the survey, representing over 25% of our teachers. Of those who responded, 57.6% preferred Calendar B to 42% who preferred Calendar A. 57 to 42. In an election, that's considered a landslide. 3,608 parents responded, representing approximately 5% of our parents, of whom 54% preferred A, 46 B, a smaller margin of preference. 301 students responded, representing less than 1% of our students. Our teachers are by far our most important stakeholders. Without them, education does not happen. If we continue to ask them what they want and then disregard what they say, it speaks volumes about how we value our teachers. Actions speak louder than words. We can say we value them. Now, actions don't speak louder than money, but they speak louder than words. So you can say you value them, but if you vote for Calendar A, you're saying, "We don't really care what you say." Speaking of teachers, in your personnel report tonight, you will see that we are losing eight teachers through resignation and two through retirement. We are gaining nine. Net loss of one teacher. Last board meeting, we gained five teachers and lost four. On 9/24, we gained 14 teachers and lost 27. I would encourage you to listen to the voice of our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Caligon?
Good evening. I must say that I've never been to one of your meetings before, and for that, I'm very sorry. But I consider this to be so important, I did not want to miss it. As a taxpayer, I consider it a privilege and a duty to vote. Therefore, I'm interested to know what you, the elected officials, will do on this issue of prayer before your meetings. I urge you to choose wisdom and say no to ending Christian prayer before your meetings. Stand strong on your foundation of our constitution and your right. Thank you.
Thank you. Myra Baumgartner?
Good evening, Board. Thanks for letting us speak tonight. I'm speaking on the prayer. The population of North Carolina is 10,975,000, according to the 2024 census. According to the letter sent to the Board of, I'm sorry, sent to Chair Kaplan on behalf of the Board, from the Freedom From Religion Foundation, their membership in North Carolina is 900. What percentage of residents are bothered by this, according to their data? .008%. I made this because I think numbers speak louder than when you try to say the words. So this is the percentage of people that are in this organization that are bothered about this. We are allowing 8 one-thousandths of a percent to influence us? Seems like our freedom of speech and religion are being attacked by a rogue group. And Forsyth County, our county commissioners open with prayer and often invite different ministers to honor them with their words, like Reverend Spangler. Would that be an option for you guys, to have someone come in and pray over us as opposed to just having a board member? Many county affiliations open with prayers, and we do at the state level. Please let us consider, sorry, lost my notes. Please let us consider whose rights are being trampled on. The 99.992% or the .008%? Please bring back or keep our prayer to open our meetings. Thank you.
Sheri Williams?
Thank you, Board. I'm a resident of Forsyth County, and I was appalled and sadly disappointed when I read in the Journal in July that nonsecular prayer was no longer being allowed to be done before the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meetings. The Freedom From Religion Foundation, known as the FFRF, complained about your prayer. The FFRF has only about 40,000 members across the country, a very low number compared to the country's entire population. And as the previous lady said, it only includes 900 in North Carolina and compared to the state's entire population. That's a very low number. As you know, they claim to protect constitutional principles and educate the public on matters relating to nontheism or a silence towards the subject of God. They are the minority, obviously, yet the vast majority believes religion is very important and wants prayer to God. They use the First Amendment and the Establishment Clause, as well as Supreme Court cases, to defend their actions. It's time that school boards across the country stop giving in to threatening letters and challenge them over and over and over again. There seems to be a fear that students at the school board meetings are impressionable at hearing the name of God during the board's prayer, and that may cause them to feel religion is being forced on them for which their parents may not approve. I can tell you that students taking science, history, or other classes may also feel forced to believe one way or another about God, a God, or even creation theories. It also includes morals, beliefs, and values due to the way the class is being taught or examples set by adult leaders and teachers, and their parents also may not go along with that and agree to it. They are the same impressionable students day after day in a classroom. How is it different than hearing some adults praying to God for a quick moment for which they can choose to participate or not? Now, one may say, the student may feel embarrassed or feel uncomfortable if they don't participate. No more than being in a chorus class and not wanting to sing. No more than being in a reading class and not feeling comfortable at reading out loud. Or being in a science class or any other class and feeling uncomfortable about what is being taught. It's part of life, and make these, they make these types of choices every single day, whether to participate or not and what to believe. And to not address God in prayer before a board meeting, all praying in one accord, seeking His guidance, can be detrimental to the overall success and safety for the students and the faculty, thus the entire school. The majority knows humans are not in control, yet the FFRF wants to control. I feel the prayers to God in your meetings are not unconstitutional, and therefore recommend the Board reinstate them immediately for the sake of our schools.
Kendra Raymond?
Good evening. I'm here to speak in favor of open verbal prayer at the beginning of public meetings. I know that a moment of silence is considered a safe path and an effective way to take. But the entire point of prayer is to invoke the presence of God, His guidance, His peace, and His wisdom during your meetings. If the board members, if the board chooses to sit in silence and say nothing, then you get nothing. It's really that simple. Do you believe you do not need these things? Do you not need the guidance of God? Do you not need His wisdom? Do you need His peace during these meetings? And do you need His guidance? If you think so, then I encourage you, and I urge you, to invoke the name of God before your meetings, call out to Him, and you will receive these things. These things are necessary for the decisions you have to make in terms of guiding and making decisions for schools, for our schools and our students. And if you choose to do this, then I'm certain you will see the fruits of it. Thank you.
The next speaker, I'm not sure of how to pronounce the first name, Gennad Wambel? Possibly? Jamal. Jamal, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Not to Mr. White, former teacher. I want to acknowledge Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior because I have to pray to Him because I am not a speaker. So we're talking about prayer right now, so you're witnessing the power of prayer right before you. Thank you, appreciate it. I want to start off with a book that's helping me out and helped others out, Keep Calm and Trust God. It's referencing about the British and how they pulled through during World War II. The British government coined the slogan, "Keep calm and carry on" in 1939 as the threat of World War II loomed. In the event that Hitler's army invaded England, the posters were to be distributed to England's general population in an effort to galvanize the resolve to resist German aggression. Should Germany invade across the English Channel, it would be one of the darkest times in world history. Just as with the British facing the threat of German invasion, we must keep calm and carry on. When adversity comes, however, simply keeping calm is not enough. We cannot fight the enemy with our soul with a slogan, nor can we carry on in our own strength. We need to rely on and gain our strength from God. We need to trust Him completely and totally. That's from Keep Calm and Trust God. So I'll also say this, in a realm of where we are today in society, where we are trying to be inclusive and welcome all different facets of life, different backgrounds, different cultures, how is it fair to people that pray to have their voices silenced? In the realm of protecting another side, we are big enough, we are civil enough to accept all voices, all cultures, within reason, who are going to be looking forward in construction and also the productivity of all humankind. Just because one prays doesn't mean that another has to pray. One right does not infringe upon another right in the realm of prayer. So I'll say this as I close. This is going to be a quote from the Constitution. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution protects the right to pray and the freedom to practice religion. So again, just because one prays doesn't mean another has to pray. We can welcome all people that pray and do not pray. We're big enough to welcome all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Augusto?
I don't like coming up here. I'm also here to speak about prayer being removed from the school board. Out of all the issues the district is facing, you're focusing on removing prayer. Seriously. We are all here, we're all adults. If you don't want to pray, then don't pray. It's that simple. No one is forcing the ones that are complaining to pray. Parents complain a lot of, for a lot of things the district is doing wrong, and nothing gets done. Important matters don't even make it to the agenda. I can't even get a call back or an email back from most of you. But here we are, the top of the things that we're talking about is removing prayer. Now, more than ever, we need God. And if you move prayer out of the meetings, you are moving into the wrong direction. God help you all.
Thank you. Jenny Easter?
Good evening. I come to you tonight to, as President of FCAE, our Public School Staff Union, to acknowledge and thank you for getting the, or rather, Mr. Krantz, getting our market study finished and ready to present to the county commissioners. And just wanted to put out there that if you need advocates to go with you to help push further, you know that we are always here and ready to support. On a personal note, with many of the comments on prayer versus a moment of silence, I do feel the need to say this as a Christian, that I don't mind prayer before meetings, but I also love a moment of silence, of reflection, and it sets the tone of what we are about to work on for the evening. I actually would like to acknowledge that I adored Susan Miller's quote the other meeting that came from the novel Alice in Wonderland, especially being an educator. And that's what we're all here to do, is worry and make decisions for our kids. I would like to believe that the Lord would rather all of us reflect and speak more on pertinent issues we face every day in our schools than spend 30 minutes worrying about a tiny moment of a meeting that many here have admitted to never having attended before. I hope that we can come to a decision, and maybe it could be that we pull some really motivational quotes from children's books to start our meeting to help us focus what we're working on every time we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Childress?
Good evening. I want to first acknowledge Mr. Krantz as well, and his team, for completing that in-depth market study. I know it took a lot of hard work, and it is greatly appreciated. My question is, though, where do we go from here? My question is, though, where do we go from here? I'm well aware when I look at my own bank accounts, money is not unlimited. However, our classified, and our classified staff has finally gotten some well-deserved financial recognition. Still, more needs to be done. Many of our hard-working classified staff have to work, one, sometimes even two, other jobs, just to support their families and make ends meet. We have to push and get creative to find the funds once we get from the county commissioners. Our schools simply cannot run without our dedicated classified folks, our bus drivers, our instructional assistants, our custodians, secretaries, food and nutrition workers, mechanics, maintenance, landscapers, and so many more, that go to work and help us educate our children. We have to do better. They deserve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Blackburn.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Blackburn, and I live in Winston-Salem. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I came to respectfully ask you to please allow your meetings to open with prayer. Prayer shows faith, humility, and reverence, which are values that we should want to model publicly for our students. The U.S. Congress and the North Carolina General Assembly opened their sessions with prayer. In 2014, the Supreme Court case Town of Greece versus Galloway, the court ruled that starting local government meetings with prayer does not violate the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. When we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, it contains the words "One Nation Under God." We are a nation founded on religious principles. We should not back down from the freedom of religious expression, which our nation has held of highest importance and is declared in the First Amendment of our Constitution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michelle Jordan.
Good evening. How are you all this evening? Good to see you. So I came here tonight to speak on a couple of things. One is about the market study, thanking you guys to get, for getting that done, and then moving forward with our next steps. So I know that we have to get the $500,000 from our county commission, but I also looked at the presentation where, in order to get where we need to be, we need about 2.4 and change, correct? So, and then if we look at then us being comparative to other districts, it was like $10 million for some other ones. So, I know that we have a lot to do, I know that there's not a lot of money, and we know all of the reasons why for that. So I hope that we do look for ways that we can figure out to get our classified, who do so much of our work, so that they can have a living wage, and they can actually afford to work in our school systems without having to have two, three, four jobs. Now, the other thing I came to speak about too was about our moment of silence. So we talk about people coming over and our founding of our country, right? They came here for freedom of religion. That did not mean to come and be Christian religion only. That meant that they wanted to practice their Christianity the way that they wanted to, and not the way that King or the government or anybody was telling them to do. And that's what we were founded on in our country. That does not mean we are forcing one religion on everybody who's in the room. It means that we are accepting of everyone. And as a public school system, we are serving the public that includes people who are not Christian. We have Jewish people in our community, we have people who are Sikh, we have people who are Muslim, and I can go on and on and on with religions and people that have come here. That's part of what America's about, is that melting pot. So having a moment of silence gives everyone the right to be able to practice what their religion is, whether it is praying to Jesus, whether it is praying to Allah, they can all do that in their mind, and that is inclusive and accepting of everybody in our community who comes to these meetings. And so, I hope you guys think about that as you're going, because that's what a public school system is supposed to be, inclusive of everyone. Thank you.
Michael Smith. Order, please, order. Michael Smith.
Hello, Board. I'm coming tonight to speak in support of prayer. Now, I don't know any of you up there, save for one, but I would imagine every one of you sit in this position because you care about our children, you want to do what's best for our children, and you want to make positive change and have an impact in their lives. The best way to do that is with the wisdom of the Lord. And He says, "Let all who want wisdom come and ask, and He'll give to all freely and liberally." And it's not just for you guys, it's for us in our lives as well. I mean, how much better would the world be if we would all take time every day to say, "God, help me. Give me wisdom today to say the right thing, to do the right thing, to lead in the right way, to be the right example." You know, and I understand the, the aspect of in a, in a moment of silence, everybody can pray to whoever they want to pray to, I get that. But we are a Christian nation, and while we accept everybody, the majority of this nation believes that there is one true living God, His Son and His Holy Spirit. And if you look over the last 60, 70 years, as we have systematically went about this country and kicked God out of every possible place we could kick Him out of, we have seen nothing but our country fall apart, our families fall apart, our education system fall apart. No, no good has come out of this. The only good that is going to come about is when we collectively go back to God, invite Him back into our institutions, our homes, our schools, and seek His will to be done in America. Then we could see some positive change. But as we continue to watch men and women try to fix it on their own, we continue to watch it fall apart faster and faster. The more we do it on our own, the quicker we fail. Everybody says that we're heading in the right direction, but it sure don't feel like it. It doesn't seem like it, and the one common denominator is we have consistently kicked God out of every aspect of our public lives. And that has got to stop him. So, I hope that every single person here would start every day out, myself included, Lord knows I need to do it, and say, "Lord Jesus, today, give me wisdom. Help me represent You. Help me impact somebody in a positive way." And that's it. So God bless each one of you. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I'm here to speak about the moment of silence. There's a lot of quotes that's been said about the Bible, or the Bill of Rights, or the North Carolina Constitution, which all do talk about the separation of church and state. Our founding fathers, Thomas Jefferson and James Madison, also talked about how the government should not violate people's rights by putting a specific religion above any other. But, you know, we've also justified slavery, we've justified not letting women open bank accounts until the 1970s, also with all of these institutions that we're naming tonight. So I think I would like to focus on the human aspect of this. Even if no one cares about the Constitution or our founding fathers, I think we know what humanity is and what it feels like to know when you belong, what it feels like when you are welcome in a place, what it feels like when you know that you will not be discriminated against or treated differently because of something about you. I have lived in multiple countries and multiple places where I was not part of a dominant culture, I didn't speak the language well, I didn't look like 98% of the people that lived there, I didn't share the same religion with them, I grew up Southern Baptist, and I always felt that difference, every single day, everywhere that I went. I know some of you have some experience with that as well. But you always remember the places that made you feel like you belong, the places that, and the people that tried to lessen that feeling of difference, that tried to increase your feeling of belonging. I also have folks in my family who are Quaker, and that is a hundreds-of-year-old Christian religion. If you're in Greensboro and you see Friends, and you see Quaker stuff everywhere, you see some here, but we have Moravians in Winston, I always say, and Quakers in Greensboro that helped to found each of our cities. Silent worship has been a part of their religion for as long as they've existed. My family members still participate in silent worship. It is a Christian tradition. Everyone can have a moment to reflect, think about what they need to think about, talk to God, talk to whoever they need to talk to about whatever's going on in their brain. Sometimes that might mean you turn to somebody next to you and say, "Hey, I need some help with this, I'm going through something, I need to talk it out." Sometimes you might do that with God or with, with another entity that you believe in. But I think we can all participate, every single one of us can participate in a moment of silence, or I love your idea of, where did Jenny go, a quote from a children's book or a book that our, our kids are reading in schools. We are so focused on literacy, like what a great way to bring that into this room. But I think if we can use a moment of silence, it honors the Christian tradition, and it honors a lot of other traditions as well, and makes everybody feel like they belong, in addition to our five strategic focus areas that talk a lot about belonging, eliminating barriers, valuing diversity, and engaging others. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment section on agenda items only. So we have six items tonight for discussion. First, Dr. Clinton Wilson, our Chief Officer of Student Services, and Sharika Hargrove, Director of Research and Evaluation, will help us kick off the United Way District Campaign.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce you to Jackie Graham Dixon, who serves as the Director of Donor Relations for United Way of Forsyth County. She'll be sharing with you tonight information concerning our United Way Campaign kickoff and the benefits of donating to United Way. So I'll pass it on to her.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. I'm Jackie Graham Dixon, and I'm described as the short lady with the very long name. But tonight, I'm here to tell you why it matters giving to the United Way. The United Way brings together the community and its resources to tackle problems that no one organization can do alone. Our vision is a world-class community where no one lives in poverty, and everyone holds the power to access opportunities and resources needed to thrive. Our key messages are that we are the convener. We bring together individuals, organizations, and we talk about the most pressing needs in our community. We're the collaborators. We actively listen to people from government agencies, from organizations, from companies within the community, individuals. And last but not least, we're the catalyst. The United Way engages the community in igniting systematic change. Now, why does Forsyth County need the United Way? The data I'm about to give you is from FY 2023, because data is always a year behind. In Forsyth County, 60,000-plus individuals live in poverty. One in four children live in poverty. 1,400-plus individuals experience homelessness, and 16% experience food insecurity. On this map, the darker areas are the areas where we have the highest concentration of poverty, and the lighter areas are where we have less. Now, what does the United Way do? Well, we invested from our community campaigns, $4 million, into the impact areas that we invest in, which are basic needs and housing, education, health, workforce development, and economic mobility. Along with our partner agencies, we were able to help 38,000-plus individuals in Forsyth We also received grants from foundations, from government agencies, and those monies are raised for our initiatives. Certain initiatives that we're very proud of and I'd like to highlight are supportive services for veterans, the RIDE United Program, in which we were able to get PACPACs for the children during the spring break and the winter break, and also the data sharing project, which the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System uses for the initiative that we both shared together for pre-K reading. We also had more than 2,000 volunteers, and they volunteered for things like the Martin Luther Day, the United Way Day of Action, as well as other opportunities. Now, the United Way has funded programs with our partner agencies, and these programs are geared towards education. As you can see, we have after-school programs, summer slide programs, community education programs, health and behavior, parent and student supports, and as I had mentioned earlier, the data sharing project. Now, I want everyone here to choose how to live united, because I want us all to live united. I'd like you to give. I'd like you to volunteer. I'd like you to get informed about the things that are impacting our community and how your investments can help with that. I want you to get involved by joining some of our affinity groups. We have four. The United Way Women's United, the Tocqueville Leadership Society, the African-American Leadership Society, and the Emerging Leaders Society. I'd like you to stay connected with us. Follow us on our social media. And most important, I'd like you to share, tell your friends, tell your families about the community issues and the impacts of what's being done. In conclusion, I want to say thank you. Thank you very much to the Board for caring about our children, for helping our future. And I also want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for allowing me to take the time to tell you why I live united, and I hope that you all will too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
You might not be able to answer this, or you might. What historically has been the amount that we've raised as a district over the past?
I'm sorry.
The question was, what, what amount have we raised as a district last year? What did we do last year?
Last year, you raised, raised a little over $84,000. And this year, we have a goal of $85,500.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we can do it.
Yeah, the workplace campaign, I think, kicked off last, what?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday?
Yes.
With official, with an official letter that went out.
Yes.
So, and it will go till when, Jackie?
Will go until November 18.
November 18. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Next, Dr. Kimberly Forbes, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, and Dr. Clinton Wilson, our Chief Officer of Student Services, will give us a career technical education partnership update and career development plans.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Rohannon, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. Tonight, we're going to give you an update on the partnership with Greater Winston-Salem Inc., as well as our career development plans. I'd like to introduce you to Mark Owens, who is our president, is the President and CEO of Greater Winston-Salem Inc., and he's going to talk to you about our partnership.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, members of the Board, and all of our team members in the district. Excited to be here with you tonight. It's been a big day for our students, our, the first day of our world of work, which we'll talk on, touch base on here in just a moment. Since the 1990s, the then Chamber of Commerce, now Greater Winston-Salem Inc., has been a partner with the school system, focusing on some really key areas of helping engage our young people for their next steps in their career post-graduation. And this is our career readiness plan that I'll just touch on quickly. We can't do this alone, it is a, a big partnership across our community, but we've made some tweaks to this work that we've done with you in the past, which is our Work Ready Credential. So there are Work Ready Credential, we'll talk- So there are Work Ready Credentials we'll talk about as well, but that's helping get our students ready to go into these paid internships that are provided through that work. It continues to have more and more students engaged, but the focus is on career readiness and making sure that these young people know how to do what we call the critical skills as they're getting ready to interview and go into the work-life balance. We also have a Senior Academy, continue to do our dropout prevention, behind the scenes, which we'll talk about, Business Attire Program, our World of Work. Just today, we had every eighth grader in the system come through the Lawrence Joel Veterans Memorial Coliseum, over 80 businesses showcasing different things. It was so exciting to hear the students talk about what they saw. And tomorrow, if you'd like to join us, we have every 10th grader coming through, so we'll be there bright and early working on that. But we're also trying to tell that story and making sure that we appreciate our educators and make sure our families know what is going on. Here are some of the partners with our newly branded Forsyth Works partnership, which is, of course, with us, your Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Organization, Forsyth Technical Community College Goodwill in Northwest North Carolina, Forsyth County, and of course, the school system. Our Forsyth Works partnership is focused on career readiness, but also labor force participation rate on the adult side, helping individuals get back into the workforce and have the right skills to have a better economic mobility opportunity in our community. Focusing specifically on career-ready youth, we're really proud of this program where we want to promote career literacy, increase employability skills, and use high school graduation as the starting point, not the finish line. And you can see here that we're doing that through our dropout prevention, our paid internship with Aspire, and continuing to showcase through our World of Work. Here are some pictures from, this is last year's, but we have some pictures from today that we will be uploading. Again, this is a really exciting program. Thank you to Dr. Forbes and her team and all of the logistics that go into this. It is a wonderful way for our students in eighth and 10th grade to be able to understand what options are there from regenerative medicine, construction, all different types across the spectrum of opportunities in the World of Work as they get ready to go into career technical education. We know that our graduation rate is on the rise thanks to your leadership and our educators, but our career and technical education students continue to lead the way with the very high graduation rates. And we hope that our students can get interested in these career opportunities that may take them into career technical education to make them ready for whatever they take on, whether that is a doctor, lawyer, owning a construction company, working in medicine, whatever that may be, they're ready for that next step. Our Work Ready Credential, we noticed that we needed to help assist the education curriculum with work-ready prep. So we created a 15-contact hour program, which includes three work-ready modules, career readiness panel, resume writing, and then my favorite, our mock interviews where we get to interview the students and help engage and give feedback to make sure they're work-ready. Our students are receiving stipends when they finish to be able to help pay for their time to be there because many of them also have part-time jobs to contribute in their family situation, as well as workforce employability, dress attire, and coaching to go along with that on how to do that. Here's one of my favorites with all the pictures of the young folks that are here in the process. Since this started in 2021, over 202 students have completed the training, 114 received paid internship offers. That is for $15 an hour for up to 100 hours of paid internships. I'm really proud. I want to call out Navant Health, for example, have hired, I think it's seven of those young students now that are working with Navant Health as well that got in through those internship programs. 105 completed those internships and over 30 companies are participating. One of the challenges that we're facing is helping get more employers to engage because we have more students wanting to do internships currently than we have employers ready to take them. So it's a great area of opportunity for us. Senior Academy is our dropout prevention program where we pair trained volunteers in our community with students that have been identified as at risk for dropout. Over 2,225 students have been paired up and worked on in this mentor program since the 1990s. 98% of them have graduated. So these are students designated at risk that have been 98%. So when there's an accountability partner, an adult in that young person's life that is stepping with them alongside of it, our community is wrapping our arms around our students and really taking that next step. And we've had over 3,700 volunteers trained and gone through the vetting process and have spent their time, talent, resource, and energy helping mentor these young people. Behind the scenes, one of these pictures, you'll see our superintendent working with our students there on the right. I believe that's at Texas Roadhouse, one of our partners. But we also have it behind the scenes at Navant Health. We also have JCPenney and Texas Roadhouse that we do dining out and dressing days. So we work on those other critical skills that these young people need to be able to learn. And then they receive that credit afterwards to go to JCPenney, where we've had wonderful participation partnership from Winston-Salem State University to come and help teach these young people how to use those dollars to spend on workforce attire. So what is next for us? We're committed to strengthening talent pipeline in Forsyth County. Our team just last week was at a national dropout prevention conference speaking about our programs. I will be heading to DC tomorrow to share with chamber leaders from across the country of our career-ready youth initiatives that you talked about, but we can't do this without everybody taking a role in this. And we're so thankful for your leadership and continued support to do that. We need to look at our pathway development so that our students can learn about jobs and careers, which is part of our WOW programming right now during our workforce week that we are focused on, to help the young people know what is available to them and that every student can hope and dream about any career that they want to achieve and go for. And then again, it empowers a sense of direction, valuable knowledge, and makes sure that our students are feeling that they can tackle and achieve anything that they'd like to. And again, our Senior Academy, our mentorship, we want to continue that program to make sure we achieve the results that we're set out to achieve, which is more students graduating and entering the workforce or whatever is next for them after graduation with the complete package of skills that they need to. So we are honored to be a partner in this, and we thank Dr. Forbes and her team, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
No questions. I was at the wonderful program today in the concourse. I was not able to get down to the lower level, but again, I saw a lot of great energy and excitement from the students and from the participants. And also, I was at the Aspire graduation last year. So again, kudos to what you're doing to embrace our young people, to encourage them and to give them hope, and also my word to give them joy.
Thank you so much for your support.
Yes, Board Member Kim.
Mine is not a question either. It is just simply a thank you for your partnership. I haven't, I'm going tomorrow to World of Work, but I went last year, and it was so amazing to see all the faces. But I also want to give a plug to Senior Academy. We still, I'm a member of Senior Academy, and we still need folks to come alongside because we have kids that still need to be mentored. So if you have an hour a week, 30 minutes twice a week, it is so rewarding. So thank you for all that you do.
Board Member Crowley.
Yes, I just want to encourage folks that are listening here tonight to get involved with this program. This is truly helping our community, and, you know, we can't have too many volunteers. So please look in your hearts and consider doing that.
Any other? Mr. Owens, thank you for your leadership and all that you do to partner with this school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Next, Lauren Richards, Chief Operations Officer, will...
We're still...
Oh, excuse me. I apologize.
We have more. It gets better.
It just gets better.
So the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has mandated that all eighth graders, starting this year, have a career development plan to be promoted to the ninth grade. So it's very timely what was just stated. And so there's been some guidelines that have been set to support that. And so on behalf of Kim Forbes and myself, we thank you for allowing us to have Naviant software because that's one of the platforms that we're utilizing to support our students with their career development plans. As it's stated up here, eighth grade, it has to be created in order to be promoted to ninth grade, and then 10th grade, it has to be revisited in order to be promoted to the 11th grade. And so there are some things that we're going to discuss tonight that will support that. And then any new high school or new student that comes into the district has to have a career development plan successfully created within 90 days of them joining our district. And so with the Naviant software, parents will be able to be notified of the CDP creation, career development plan creation. They also will be able to view it from their side. So they'll be able to log in and see what their students are actually doing with their career development plan. And then we encourage, we will encourage our parents to be a part of that process for their post-secondary careers and provide guidance as well to their students.
So what we've been working on is students will be completing self-assessments, career inventories to get more information about what interests them, which ties in really well to the WOW because then they've done these and they can connect with what they need to do in high school and beyond. They're going to explore the alignment of the academic courses as a part of the career development plan, and they're going to create in 10th grade, the beginning of a career portfolio. So we have a continuum here of what we will be doing sixth through 12th grade, but for this year, because it's mandated we start this year, we're actually starting with the eighth grade for them to have that career development plan completed. They've been doing their self-assessments, as I said. Then they will be able to be promoted to the ninth grade. We will not have to do the 10th grade piece of it until these eighth graders reach 10th grade. So we have a timeline of training, our career development coordinators, as well as our school counselors, October-November timeframe on how to develop these plans. Letters will be sent in November to the parents. We're going to have parent workshops, November/December, available if they want to learn more information about it. And we've already begun, starting the assessments with the students in eighth grade, but they will begin those career development plans January through April. And now, are there any questions about the career development plan?
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will present the 2025-2026 Academic Calendar Options and Survey Results.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. So we recently conducted an additional survey. You may recall, we did a survey in the spring for these calendars and did not get a lot of feedback, and so we did capture several more responses this time, so we were happy to see that. As a quick review, just kind of a side-by-side visual of the differences between Calendar A and Calendar B, noticing that the largest difference there is the spring break timeline being either in the March, end of third quarter time period, or aligned more with that Easter holiday later in the month in the first part of April. So we put the survey out for 10 days. We did leave it open for an additional few days to capture some additional results. And so, as shared with you earlier this evening, the overall results were for Calendar A. It was a 51-49 split. Even though the responses were very low in the spring, it's very similar here. And so this was very, very tight between the two calendars. When breaking that data out between our stakeholder groups, you can also see that it was very close across all three. I'm sorry, all four. And so in looking at the additional information and looking at the overall results of that 51-49 split, staff did make the recommendation for Calendar A, but I will open it up for any questions or feedback from the board before partying with you this evening.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
I'm just curious why you were leaning towards Calendar A over Calendar B. When I see Calendar B, I see two breaks after Christmas, like the spring break and the Easter break. I'm just curious why recommendations leaning toward A instead of B?
Sure. And so the primary reason for A is simply that A was 51% over 49%. And so we went with that majority vote. We did have some, several discussions around the different stakeholder feedback, where some stakeholders are saying that they were more favorable towards B, some saying more favorable towards A, but it was the overall data that was used for the 51-49 split.
Board Member Kim.
I'd just like to point out for everyone, as we think about how to vote for this, that Calendar B is more favorable to our educators and staff, and you kind of get the best of both worlds with it because you'll get your March spring break, and then you get a four-day weekend in April. So it gives you the best of both worlds and respects that our educators and probably even our students and parents need a bit of a break after that long stretch after the winter break.
That's great feedback.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Next, Kevin Sherrill, our Chief Technology Officer, will discuss the contract with Red Rover Time and Attendance Software.
Good evening, board members. Let me wait while Kevin pulls up the slides here. Good evening, Chair Kaplan, board members, and Superintendent McManus. I've come to you tonight, and I've got my wingman, Mr. Kranz, over here with me, so glad to have him with us as well. As many of you know, we are in the midst of a business modernization project to modernize our financial systems and our HR systems. That is an ongoing project, and then I believe later in December, at a December board meeting, we're going to bring you a full update of where we are on that project. That is our Tyler Munis migration. So as part of that, we also have a need to modernize our time and attendance processes for our district. So what is that? Time and attendance is how our classified, our hourly employees log their time on time sheets. It's how our staff request time off through an antiquated database module that we have now. So we're looking to modernize that and move it to more of an integrated digital platform. So why do we need this? So I brought a visual aid, and this is my feeble attempt to make this a little bit interactive. Why do we need it? So, Tommy, I got it. So, board members, I've got one more. I'm not as tall as Tommy, so I'm not going to be seen on TV anymore at this moment, but what does that represent? This is the interactive part. It's the only part. Anybody want to buzz in and answer the question there?
A lot of paper.
Chair Bohannon, Vice Chair Bohannon, I feel like you want to speak.
Is it, it's either like time off requests or like it's something that is on paper that doesn't need to be on paper?
Time cards.
We're going to take that, oh, it's a time card. We're going to take that as an answer, as a yes answer, as a correct answer. You got to check on that. Efficient, no remediation needed. These 3,500 pages of paper represent the number of paper time sheets we process every month in this district. So we need this for efficiency. We need it, we need to digitize it. I want to just quickly take you through this a minute. So these start as someone sitting down on a, I can't, I don't know if I can do this. Let me get out of here. I can see the clock. It starts with someone sitting in front of their computer, sometimes daily, weekly, or monthly. It's got to be one of those, at least bi-monthly. At the end of the month, someone has to sit down, and I think I gave you a sample, I believe Lisa gave you a sample of the time sheet there in your packet tonight. They have to key in their time. So they key it in on their computer, and then they do what? They print it. And then they, at the school level, they take it to their financial manager at the school. Board Member Watts, you know this process, I'm sure. You've signed a lot of these in your day. And they hand that off for review. The financial manager hands it to the principal. They sign it, it's then handed back to the financial manager, who then goes into the AS400 and hand keys the entries into our system. Very similar process in our departments with our admin assistants. So I just wanted to make this my impact statement to say this is the efficiency we need to work on, and I feel like we can do that with a modern system. So to tackle this, we put together a committee, representation of finance, technology, our operations folks, our school finance folks, our school finance manager representation, HR was part of this, admin assistants, and some folks from our substitute, teacher substitute management office. So we pulled together, we did a full RFP, put it out for bid. We had nine companies bid on this. Some were K-12 specific, some were more business-oriented, and these are the companies that all submitted proposals for that. We looked at demos, we looked at pricing, we had a scoring rubric of how we evaluated these companies and how it may be the best fit for our solution. We got it down to some finalists, brought them back in again, and really dug a little deeper about how this would help us move forward with our modernization. deeper about how this would help us move forward with our modernization. And as the agenda item says, we chose a company called Red Rover. I have no idea where the name originated from, I plan on finding that out. Makes me want to grab hands and send Chair Kaplan on over, but that's, 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 I'm not sure where the name came from. But this is an up-and-coming company. It's only been around for about four years, but they, they are really becoming a market leader in the K-12 space around time attendance. It's strictly for a K-12 market. Again, absent management, so taking a day off, they have a substitute management module too, should we need that in the future, if we want, if we ever want to bring our substitute process back in-house. It has a full substitute, teacher substitute management process as well. Mobile, obviously it's mobile-ready for, for checking in, where our, instead of doing time sheets, our employees could check in each day on their mobile app, they could do that on the computer, they could set up a kiosk in the school. There's multiple ways that folks that are now doing their time sheets on paper, that daily they would just log in and say, I'm here for work, and they would log out, and that's the way we capture the time digitally. Some of the quick references, and since I put this together, Guilford County has also signed a contract to go with them as well, with Charlotte Mecklenburg. And you see some of the others there that have Munus beside it. Munus is the software package we're going to for our ERP, our Enterprise Resource Planning Module, which is our financial system. So the Red Rover folks and this solution is, they've already fully integrated in several districts across the country with the financial package that we're going to be using. So that, that's another plus for us. And then we get down to what it costs, which is why, if we have any questions about that, Tommy's here with us. We looked at a lot of products ranging from half a million dollars down to 150,000. This one came in at 175 a year, it's not the cheapest, but it did have some of the features that we needed, that's the, the one that was less expensive did not have. So we feel like this is the best fit for us. And in the corner there, if we, my goal is to bring this back for action in two weeks to the next board meeting, be on for action. And if we approve to go forward, what I'd like to do is start this rollout implementation in January. We are not going live, and you'll learn more about this in December, we're not going live with our payroll Munus integration until the following January. So that gives us a year to phase this in for all employees that we need to use it. And, and I was thinking about it, it's really going to touch every employee in some way, like myself. In, in my role, I would use it to request a day off that would then go to, to Dr. Williams for approval, so I would use it for that. And our hourly employees would use it daily for time, our principals would use it to, to approve time. So it's really every employee will have some type of interaction with this. So I feel like that would give us time to roll it out and use it, and still key it back in to AS400 as we're doing now. But it gets all our users to that point, that when we go live with Munus, then that part's out of the way, and our users are, our employees are familiar with the timekeeping, it's not another heavy lift while we're rolling out a new payroll system. So I think that's the timeline that makes best sense for us. Other districts are, are going through some of the similar things. Charlotte Mecklenburg is approaching it the same way that I just described. So that's what I have. Any, any questions that you see the financial commitment there, year one, if we go live and start using in January, be prorated at 132, and then an annual subscription of 175. And I won't speak for Tommy, but we are paying for this out of our Tyler Munus Conversion Migration Project that he's set funds, funds aside to get us through this over the next two years. So, questions?
Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, have we projected savings either by, you know, from paper or people that, that we should expect to?
Yeah, we've not projected the real dollars, but I, I have personally, if you just think about the amount of hands that are touching this, just the human error, not saying anyone's, you know, misrepresenting their time, but just the fact that we've got 3,500-plus people hand-keying their hours worked, so just the, the human error, I'm sure it's there. Can we quantify that cost? I don't know if we can or not. But I think there's some, definitely some productivity savings there of not having to print this, pass the paper around, send it in, key it in, in the system here. The manager or the supervisor will just go in, review the time, approve it, it would then export out to Munus once we're live on that, and everything goes digitally into the payroll system. That's the end goal. We've got a lot of steps to get there and a lot of months to, to work, but that, that would definitely be some, some definite soft cost, indirect cost productivity savings there for sure.
Okay. And one other question, you used the word "modernization" a few times. What year was the AS400 implemented?
I want to say it was 1987, maybe before, maybe before. I was, I was 17 then. It was in the 80s, it's an 80s system. It's the old green screen, although you can change the color, I've seen some of our folks with different color text, and they know their function keys. But it's a, a system that the state's used for many, many years, and we're moving away from it finally to something more modern. And like I said, I'll say it one last time, we'll give you a good, full update in December. Our superintendent and I talked about that today, and Tommy and I will put together a good roadmap of where we are on that project in December. So excited about getting this done. Other questions?
Vice Chair Bohannon?
This isn't, this isn't a question, it's just more so just from my own sort of professional perspective. It's hard to quantify, so of course I agree with all the things in terms of the savings of paper and all of those things, but to me, the bigger cost savings is in the actual, like, hours worked by administrative staff to process these. So if you spend, whoever you are, if you're like an administrative assistant, if you sit at your desk and you spend, depending on how large, like how many people you have to do this for, it could take you hours to do this, and you could be spending that time doing something else, like something that is in, you know, not to say that working on time ultimately doesn't contribute to the work, but you could be spending that time doing something else that, you know, assists in one of the many other things that we need to be done. That's what I'm most excited about. I think that you'll, you'll, beyond, this will beyond pay for itself at the end of the day, in my opinion.
We do a lot of labor-intensive tasks right now, and we've got, we've got a roadmap to move away from those, so yes, good point. Any last questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will discuss the market study, Part Two, and update on compensation plan presented on October 8.
To add to Kevin one thing, on one copy machine, okay, what you will save with this system is the elimination of 1.9 million sheets of paper per year. And that's on one. And I've actually counted them, so I know exactly the number there. So I'm not going to go through everything, because we've pretty much done it, but if you recall, the purpose of the baseline, which in your book, you've got the executive summary for 2020, and it matches up. Without us having started at that point, it matched up, where what are we trying to accomplish? One, a living wage for our employees, a plan that is transparent and easily understood, one that is competitive in the hiring of new employees, in the retention of employees, and the most important thing is a plan that is sustainable. This gave you a recap of what in the 2020, we started with the flat pay increase, and then the reclassification of existing jobs. And y'all, as a board and the superintendent, have done a lot of great things in the last four years. If you recall, when the state did the 4% raise a few years back, and they said plus 2% on bus drivers, the administration weighed ahead in y'all's approval, and it was 6%. And the bus drivers and maintenance picked up an additional 2 to 8%. So y'all have made some significant gains, while it's not exactly what everybody wants, it was a significant contribution on the part of the investment on behalf of the district. Here's a recap of the raises that we've received over the last five years. Most of it, remember, is driven by the state. We also introduced last year the local service longevity. That longevity, as you stay here, you go at 1% every three years. So you go to one, then two, and year six, then the nine, to, to another 3% in year nine, and it becomes a significant contribution. And I think it gets employees thinking about the benefits they receive with healthcare, the benefits received with retirement, and the things that, you know, as I've gotten older, I definitely think a little bit more about. But I think it forces everybody to start thinking a little bit more about their future. And there are some significant opportunities inside of the school system, being the healthcare plan, being the retirement system, and other opportunities that are arisen, I don't think get the attention as young people as it should. So what we did in this study is basically this. We took the, we went out to Guilford County, we went out to Durham County, we went out to Wake County, Forsyth County Government, as well as NCDPI. And we looked at all their classified positions and compared their salary costs, the highest, the lowest, and then an average. When we did that, we found that we were better than Guilford on everything but two, two jobs, and that was it. We found that we were better than, than the market average, or close. Forsyth County was a little difficult, while it's competitive, like on bus drivers and things of that sort, it's not as much of a population that you've got. We showed you that to do a cost implementation that was going to beat the state average, the NCDPI was about 2.5 million dollars. If you wanted, in my understanding, after our meeting, the desire was, what would it cost for us to beat Durham? To beat Durham's 4.9 million dollars. What would it cost to beat Wake County? 9.5 million dollars. So, any questions?
Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, what, what is the definition of a living wage?
You know, I wish I had looked in that file today, as I glanced at it, it comes off of the Forsyth site, and it's not, let me say, I looked at the living wage, I don't know how anybody can live off of it. Seriously, I, when I look at that calculation, they break it out with no children, one child, married, one person working, two people working, they get up to three children. I don't know how anybody can say that's a living wage. And I'm not, I'm not trying to discredit their, their calculator, I just don't believe that that's truly a living wage, when you, when you look at what rents are, look at food, gasoline, and just everything.
Did they put a, an amount on it? Is there?
Yeah, but I don't have that in my head. It's in a file sitting on my desk right now, but I'm sorry.
I was just curious.
Our wage right now is beating the living wage. And would y'all say that we're, we're good? And the answer is no, we're not. There's areas we've got to do better, and we were beating the living wage.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon?
So the, the numbers, Mr. Krantz, that you said that would cost, that's per year?
Yes, sir.
So we would need 9 million additional, if we wanted to beat Wake, we would need to have 9 million additional dollars per year allocated to us in order to make that happen?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other one, Durham was four?
Durham was going to be 4.9, Wake was 9.5.
And that's for all classified positions? Or just?
Yes, sir, that was all classified. That we got to the average, so we're, we're below, which we're below it, to bring all those that are below to the average, and so we're equal with Durham, it would cost us 4.9 million dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, one more. When do, when do we present to the commission?
Thursday. I was about to tell you all, this Thursday we present, and it's, it's obviously more than the 500, but we are presenting the whole thing. And see what happens after that, and then we'll, we're going to try, but then we'll come back to the board with the outcome of that and figure out our next steps locally, internally.
Okay, thank you so much. Many of you may have noticed a change in our invocational practice at the beginning of our Board of Education meetings, from a non-secular prayer to a moment of silence. This change took place after our board received a letter from the Freedom from Religion dated April 25, 2024. The letter stated that our board was in violation of the constitutional principle of separation between state and church, and threatened the Board of Education with a lawsuit if it continued this practice. Our board decided to align our invocation with how our schools start their days with a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. This inclusive practice allows for all individuals to personally say a prayer that aligns with one's own personal beliefs. As a Christian, I certainly take this opportunity for a personal prayer for our board to make the best decisions to positively impact our student outcomes. Board Member Barr brought to my attention that he would like to discuss this change of practice in a public setting and allow for a public board vote because of the significant change to our past board meeting agenda practices. At this time, I'd like to open this up for discussion. Would any board members like to make a comment?
Madam Chair, I don't mind starting.
Okay, Board Member Barr.
Thank you, thank you so much. And I've wrote some things down, instead of just kind of speaking from the top of my head, but the article from the journal entitled "Board Ends Practice of Opening Prayer" really bothered me. It gave the appearance that I voted to end open prayer during closed session. I want to be clear that I did not. Verbal prayer is a core value of mine. My mom would get up every morning and pray aloud for her family, naming each of her boys by name, and nephews and grandkids and all of that. It wasn't a moment of silence, and today, her words carry me. The discussion, in my opinion, should have never taken closed doors. It wasn't a lawsuit, it was a threat of a lawsuit, a threat of a lawsuit. It is the same letter from an atheist organization that other boards received. The organization's mission and core value is to stop any religious expressions in public and perhaps private spaces. Again, the way this was handled gave, gave the appearance that we all were in agreement with this decision, and because there was no open discussion and public vote, the entire process appeared less than transparent to our community. Here are some questions that I have. Why are we responding to this threat now when past boards have not responded? At what point do we fight for our own community core values? My understanding is that this came from one parent when there are thousands who believe the opposite. What about their perspectives? It concerns me that a longstanding practice of Winston-Salem Forsyth County school boards in the past of praying non-sectarian prayers could be eliminated tonight because of one complaint. This makes us look weak and compliant. Of course, they shroud their complaint under the guise of separation of church and state. As a district, it feels we are starting to tamper with things that could adversely affect our market share, causing our parents to leave our public schools and take advantage of the opportunity scholarships from our state legislators. Parents are starting to feel uneasy about the direction of our choice program. I think some of them have spoken, maybe last board meeting. And now we're tampering with a longstanding tradition of open prayer before board meetings. I'm a product of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, I'm sure some of you guys remember, we're on the 4222 plan. I came through that, attended Lloydsville, Diggs, Griffith Junior High, Anderson Parkland. My wife and children are products of this community, and it is part of our core value. I don't want our district hurt because we have compromised our core values to take on another that has no long-term investment in our community. So, thank you, Chair.
Absolutely. Yes, Board Member Miller.
Yes. I totally support everything that Robert Barr just said. I feel strongly that an opening prayer sets the tone for the entire meeting. It can help those in attendance focus their hearts and minds on the purpose of the meeting, invite guidance and wisdom from the Lord, and it creates a sense of unity amongst our families. And I want you to remember that only one parent complained, and it was anonymous. It was anonymous. And if you don't know, I love to write prayers, and I love to lead prayers, so this is just a really very important thing to me.
Board Member Kuhn?
So, I, I love Jesus, and I, I have a strong relationship with Him, and that is mine to have. And I too had moms and grandmas that prayed for me. Oftentimes, they were praying for me silently, they were my circle makers, praying for me that I would make it through life and get me to where I am today. Prayer is very much a part of my personal life, and I also understand not everybody believes like me. believes like me. Those two things can exist at the same time, and that's okay. Because of that, though, because I do think of, I think about this little girl, it almost makes me cry, there was a little girl in a class that I was helping in, and they were having a party, and she was sitting there not participating in the party, and I asked her, was she allergic, what was going on? And it turned out that she was celebrating Ramadan, and so she could not participate with her classmates because of her faith. She didn't make anybody else do what she was doing, just like, I don't want to make anybody else do what I do. If somebody wants to talk to me about my faith, I will gladly talk to them about it. But I think that we can respect others and allow individual prayer in a silent manner, and I think that that is still honoring my love for Jesus, as well as honoring those who don't believe.
Any, yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
I also would like to say prayer is also a core value in my, in my life, and in fact, each morning, I have a group of friends, and we send prayers to each other each morning, and so that's how we open up our day. I am a Christian, I attend and I participate weekly or more in activities in my church. But I do want to say this, I want to make sure that every child, every parent feels comfortable, because we have all faiths in our school system, and I want them all to feel welcome. And so my support of a moment of silence is in no way denouncing my belief and prayer.
Any other? Board Member Wood? Oh, I thought you were, okay, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, why is any one organization, to wit, the Freedom From Religion Foundation, that's the name of their organization, why are they so dismissive of prayer as a vital element of our proceedings here at the board? And they assert in, in their letter, if you read the letter, if you see the letter, you'll, they use the term prayer being needlessly employed by this board. I sit as a member of the board, as a, as an alumnus of this institution, this academy, as the grandfather of two children that are in the school now, and I do not in any way think that we needlessly engage in prayer. I think all of us need prayer. With the challenges we have in, in the schools, seems to me our students, our teachers, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, the folks that work in high tech, high tech, seems like all of us need prayer, and need all the help that we can get. So, with the implied threat of litigation, if we refuse to genuflect to their demands or bow the knee, bow the knee to their proposal, it's, it's caused me to take a look at Schoolhouse Jurisprudence, and what has occurred in some recent years or decades. Schoolhouse Jurisprudence has a storied and somewhat controversial, as we all know, history and legacy. SCOTUS has, the Supreme Court of the United States, also has a checkered ruling history. Most of us in this room would probably agree with that. In Kennedy versus Bremerton School District in 2022, the court ruled in this landmark decision that individuals do not base, do not lose their rights to free speech and free exercise of religion at school or on school grounds. It revolved and was resolved by SCOTUS in favor of a high school football coach. The coach had lost his job for praying on school campus grounds, government-owned property, a football field to be specific. He was fired for doing so. The same SCOTUS has previously ruled that a student may lead or say a prayer in school, during school, but it must be voluntary, and the student could not use, I didn't know this until I read some of the research, the student could do that on a voluntary basis, but they could not use the school-owned or government PA system to do so. Now, in 2022, the same SCOTUS, but with nine different people, wearing the nine black robes, rendering a different decision, a high school football coach can pray on the school grounds during a football game on school property. There are some American citizens who feel our highest court has on occasion abandoned common sense, at least in this, at least in this area. I do believe in prayer, and I believe that prayer changes things, I believe prayer changes minds, I believe prayer changes people, circumstances, you and me, and I believe it can help to change our students. Students can have worse things happen to them than their mom, or daddy, or grandma, or grandpa praying for them, or their school board beginning their proceedings with a simple prayer, that no one is coerced to be a part of, and which the Freedom From Religion Foundation, in their very existence, is to excise, to remove, to abolish any element of faith or religion in our society and in our culture. I dare say there are many parents, grandparents, single moms, single dads who begin every day, who probably began this morning with what some call a covering prayer, that their child will be kept safe from harm while they're on the yellow bus to and from the school, while they're inside the building, while they're in the classroom, safe from the bullying of another student or adult, safe from the ideas that America is not a great country and is a bad country, and safe from the potential bullet of a misguided miscreant who may invade that campus. Others this evening have stated the history and the legacy that we have in this country. Many may recall that John F. Kennedy, one of our former presidents, famously kept a plaque on his desk in the Oval Office that simply read, "Oh God, thy sea is so great, and my boat is so small." It's the opening line of, of the written Fisherman's Prayer, and it was inscribed on a plaque that was given to the president by Navy Admiral Hyman Rickover, when he assumed the presidency, and it remains, the original plaque is now on display in the JFK, JFK Library. "Thy sea, oh God, so great, my boat so small, it cannot be that any happy fate will me befall; say that thy goodness opens paths for me through the consuming wasteness, avastness of thy great sea." A metaphor for the feeling, a metaphor for the feeling of inadequacy when faced with great responsibilities, which this board must face every day, and in every one of our board meetings, of course. Policing the boundaries of church and state has, has often fallen into the laps of SCOTUS, but I think we need to remember tonight that the framers of our Declaration of Independence, as we make this decision upon whether to continue the legacy and of the protocol legacy that we have of prayer before our meetings, the framers of our Declaration of Independence, including the young author Thomas Jefferson, concluded that document, if you have one near you, or if you look it up on the internet, or do the Google, or whatever, it, it concludes with, quote, "with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence." A clear declaration of independence, expressed in the belief that God protects all aspects of life, including spiritual and political matters as well. I support Board Member Barr's efforts to rest of redefine this, redefine this process about whether we're talking about continuing the legacy and the protocol of prayer in our sessions, as opposed to just voting to embrace a moment of silence. I, for one, am not opposed to a board procedure that would follow our lead prayer with a moment of silence, and/or an inspirational thought, or an inspirational poem, as selected by Board Member Miller in recent times, but to just replace prayer with a mandated moment of silence would do nothing more than mandate another situation with regards to those who are, and, and I do not think will satisfy the Freedom From Religion Foundation. Its agents of, the agents of the Freedom From Religious Foundation, Freedom From Religion Foundation, they are viciously attacking the board for praying for our board and our students, to reject prayer as needless, and in the words of the Freedom From Religion Foundation, is a misguided misunderstanding of who we are and the Constitution and laws that we work under and serve under. Someone said to me recently, "An atheist can only deny God if God exists." That's something for us to consider and to, and to think about. We have, as a board, no obligation to these, what I would refer to as ideological highwaymen, their body and Clyde tactics, our obligation is to these students that we serve, and what is best for our students. Not yielding to these outrageous barbaric demands would rob us of our legacy and ride off and, and allow them to ride off into the sunset to carve another notch in their atheistic and anti-God agenda belt. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bohannon.
So, here's, here's what I'll say, and I didn't write anything down, I didn't actually plan on speaking on this issue, because we've talked about it, we have talked about this matter multiple times, we've spent a lot of time, energy, and effort on this matter, more so, in my opinion, than the amount of time we maybe should have been spending on things related to the actual work that we're here to do. I'm not going to talk about my background, I'm not going to talk about how I was raised, I'm not going to talk about my religion, because quite frankly, my opinion is, it does not matter. The reality is, and, and I, I want to, I want to be very clear when I say this, that the oath of office I took, I took understanding what the words were, I know what I said when I invoked the name of God when I said my oath, I know what that means for me. Whatever religious practice I choose to participate in, I fundamentally believe that it is not my responsibility, nor should it be my concern, to attempt to project that on others in any shape or form. To be, I'm sorry, I'm talking. I think we need to respect the fact that board members are talking. The reality is for me, that, and let's just call it spade to spade, this is on our agenda tonight, in the spirit of compromise, we talked about this, this is on our agenda tonight in the spirit of compromise, because we made the decision, I think that journal article came out July 10th, if I'm not mistaken, that journal article came out in July, on July the 10th. In the spirit of compromise, we've had several conversations about making adjustments so that we can be inclusive to those who want to have some thoughtful reflection or prayer, depending on whatever your religious persuasion or, or religious aptitude is, you have that opportunity. Every single school day, every child in this district says a pledge of allegiance, and that is followed by a moment of silence. The impetus behind that thought was to be consistent across the board. What I think the moment of silence does is what other board members have said it does, which is creates an opportunity for people to pray, or to not, or to reflect, or to do whatever it is that they feel like they need to do in order to prepare themselves for the work of this board. I will say definitively, from a, from a personal sort of perspective, as a unit, we should, I think, and we have committed to making sure that we're being transparent with each other about our perspectives and our thoughts, and that we're articulating those to each other, and being very clear about where we stand, so that none of us feel like when we get up here on this dais, that we're, we've been gotcha, that there's been a surprise, that there's been some type of like shift or twist. I think we owe that to each other moving forward, I think we need to recommit to that, and that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Any other comments? Board Member Watts?
"The joy of the Lord is my salvation, pray without ceasing every day." And I can do that in my moment of silence and find joy each and every day.
Any other? Okay, well, thank you, we are now going to move on to our action items. Our first action item, and we have two tonight to consider, is consider approval of Calendar A for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
I would like to motion that we approve Calendar B for the 25-26 school year.
So a substitute motion was made by Board Member Kuhn to approve Calendar B for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a second on a substitute?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? So we have a, a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval to adopt a moment of silence at board meetings. Do I have a motion?
And Chair, I also would like to make a substitute motion that we continue our public non-sectarian prayers before board meetings.
So Board Member Barr has made a substitute motion to continue the non-sectarian prayers that we have adopted at our board meetings.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Miller, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion fails, six to three.
I'd like to make the motion that we continue the moment of silence.
Okay. A motion was made by Board Member Crowley to continue a moment of silence.
It says not, okay. Excuse me.
They're not, they're being... Please be respectful and remain in your seats until the meeting is over. You are out of order, sir. Order, please. So we have a motion by Board Member Crowley to consider continuing the practice of a moment of silence, and we have a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, six to three. Next is our, is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. Okay, let's turn to the next slide. So first and foremost, we have started our panorama, as everyone knows, and so I just put this up here, it's on our webpage, we're going to continue to message this, this is the way that culture and climate are assessed within our, our schools and throughout the district, and so I just encourage our families, last year we had a great responses from students and staff, we are really hoping to get up our parent responses this year, so push, we're going to continue to push for that. Next, staff will be holding listening sessions, I mentioned this when we did... I mentioned this when we did our update for our future-ready plan of our three initiatives. And so from October 21st to November 15th, we will be in every school in a listening session around the work of the code, around our promotion, prevention, and intervention strategy. So we will be bringing that data back, and we'll be using that data to inform any changes that might be necessary to our work. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend a ceremony with the Winston-Salem Foundation. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but they give grants to our teachers. Everybody probably does know that. But just so you know, we had 36 teachers receive $70,496, $83 in grants. Many of those grants are funding teachers to go to professional learning opportunities outside of the district, conferences and things like that. But the teachers that spoke were absolutely inspiring and motivating, and they're doing such innovative things in their classroom from the learning they're getting. So thank you to the Winston-Salem Foundation for, between that and our Education Foundation, we have lots of teachers receiving money to do innovative things in their classrooms. Also, this is another exciting announcement that we just found about, found out about, but there is a group called the 20 within our community. It's a local, a local nonprofit, but they received $20,000 from the opioid settlement fund, funding to partner with our district to provide youth drug education training. So we just found that out. So if you look at the bottom of this, on October 24th, Stanford Medicine Research Lab will be starting district training, and this is all around drug prevention. So again, we have so many community groups and members pouring into our district to support our students, so that's exciting news. Last but not least, November 5th is obviously Election Day, and so our school district is closed for students, but it is a professional learning day for staff on November 5th. But just wanted to remind everybody of that. It is a day because so many of our schools are open for as election sites, and so it is a professional learning day for staff. That, on the left, a booklet went out Monday with all of the course offerings for that day. And last but not least, I think this is the last slide. Yes, because we will not be meeting before this holiday, and I do want to thank all of our veterans, both those who have served in the past, those who are currently serving for sacrificing their own lives and the lives of their families for us and for our freedom. So it's a little bit early for November 11th Veterans Day, but Happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans, because we will not have a meeting before then. Thank you. Yes, yes, yes.
You please have someone on your team to go back and research the amount that's in that account?
Yes.
But that's something we used to do as a board to kind of sponsor that scholarship?
Yes.
We didn't want to make sure come May or June.
Absolutely, we will. Got it. Thank you, Dr. Stokes. She's going to research that, and we'll get back to you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Questions? Okay, thank you. Well, our next order of business is our consent agenda. Consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 would be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we begin our public comments, let me say goodnight to Cable 2. Thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.